We'll call to order the meeting of the Kerrville City Council for Tuesday, June 14th at 6:00 PM. We will start with an invocation by Laney Johnson from the Pregnancy Resource Center, followed by the pledge to the flag by Chief Smith. If you'd like to, you may please stand.
We praise you that you are Almighty and that you've known this day before the beginning of time. We thank you that we can trust your mighty hand to be in control of all that happens. We thank you for the beautiful area that we live in and for the people who are willing to take responsibility for the management of our town. We thank you for your word in Romans 13:1 where you tell us that every person is in subjection to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God, and those which exist are established by God. We ask your forgiveness for the times that we failed to support their decisions and to trust that your hand is in control. We lift up all the council members and the mayor today, and we ask for your blessings on them and upon the decisions that will be put before them today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Will you join me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you all coming. We're minus one tonight, but we can continue on. We'll start out with item number one, which is the Visitors and Citizens Forum. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out a speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. City council may not discuss or take action on an item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. The number of speakers will be limited to the first 10 speakers, and each speaker is limited to four minutes. And because of a question that we've had from meeting past, I would like to preface this Citizens Forum with an excerpt from our procedural rules for the Kerrville City Council, Section 4.4. We'll discuss it in more detail later, but as a preface to our Citizens Forum, I would like to read it and ask that everyone please abide by the procedural rules, as we as council members and mayor do as well. Rule 4.4 says, "All persons present in the meeting room should eschew abusive, rude, or inappropriate conduct." On page three of seven, page five of seven, persons making irrelevant, personal, impertinent, overly redundant, or slanderous remarks may be barred by the presiding officer from further comment before the council during the meeting. That having been said, I'd like to call our first speaker. And again, I'd like that we would all abide by the rules of the council. Our first speaker tonight is Will Spencer-Hart. If you'll take the platform, and please give your name and address.
I'm Will Spencer-Hart. I live at 1306 Jackson Road. I was very pleased when I read the June 2nd article by our city manager, in which he explained a lot of things about our water projects. But it did alert me to one concern, is we only really have one sewer plant in Kerrville, and it was built over 50 years ago, I think more like 60 years ago initially. And we pump sewer all over the place, and I would like for the city to give some consideration to possibly building a sewer plant over on the south side of Kerrville, so we don't have to transport sewer across the river, and possibly toward Ingram. One other thing that has hit the news is Castlecombe. I've been out to Castlecombe, and I would like for the city manager to give some thought to what it would take to annex Castlecombe. It's a nice subdivision. I know the city has an interest in subdivisions for workers to live in in that area. And city sewer is checkerboarded all around it, all around Castlecombe, at the airport, it's at the Catholic High School, all within very close proximity to Castlecombe. And I think it would be a good way for the city and the county to be working together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is John Combskure. If you would approach the platform, give your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Welcome, everyone. Happy Flags Day. My name is John Combskure. You all know I am the Lord, and that's about it there. There's no mystery about things that have been going on. I'm the master of the universe, and I demand respect. Check your history books. Someone from Europe came to the Flag Day USA to dominate the Euro, number one currency globally. Now that hand, the old government has been squashed. It's the Lord's way now. 6/1416. Come December after the final votes, I wish to be your president here in Kerrville, ROCK in the USA. Now let's relax. That's all.
Thank you, John. Next speaker is Renee Lefasoie-Massie.
Hi, my name is Renee Lefasoie, also Massie, and a lot of you all know me as the Yard Art Lady of Kerrville. My address is 1305 Alice Street. Okay, well, meanwhile, back at the podium. So, the definition of community, a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals. Mrs. White, as city council member, I continue to watch your voting history go against what the city of Kerrville appeared to suggest wanting through the vote of the other city council members. At the meeting four weeks ago, though not yet sworn in as mayor, I began to wonder yet again, as you voted against the majority over and over. In regards to your video blog, of which you posted in 2011, as a member of this community, I am extremely concerned. I would actually go so far as to say that I'm quite scared, that the community that you actually speak of and continue to vote for is that of your own choosing and not that for the better of all of our community. As stated in the city ethics policy, each council member should, must remain independent and impartial and accountable to the citizens and businesses that they serve. As far as goals, to remain independent, impartial, and fair in your judgment and actions, as well as use your respective office or position for the public good and not for the personal gain. Referring to the standards of conduct, official shall assure fair and equal treatment of all persons and matters presented to them in their city as service to the city. City officials shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of the public or other city officials and employees. Need I also remind you that the city ethics policy is actually for the elected officials, not for myself, as stated a few weeks ago? Though it is a good thing to do, I don't have to abide by it, as you all do. In the statement of commitment of which city elected officials do sign an agreement, the last sentence states, "Before speaking or acting, I will ask myself the following questions. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better relationships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned?" Mrs. White, as someone who referred to and spoke claiming to be doing so from the Bible and out of concern that we are surrounded by hell, I quote this, "There is only one lawgiver and judge, he who is able to save and destroy, but you. Who are you to judge your neighbor?" James 4:12. As a citizen of Kerrville and a community activist, I ask you, Ms. White, are you actually capable of being the mayor for all of our community, or just those that you see fit?
Thank you, Renee. Next speaker is Jim Hart.
Thank you. I won't take but a minute. I have a concern. I live at, I'm Jim Hart, I'm a native of Kerrville, born and raised here. I live at 303 Candace Drive. Today in the paper, I noticed that we have a failing sewer system, and my biggest concern for the county. I'm concerned that within the city, at Aaron Drive in Lloyce, each time it rains, we, out of the sewer pipes, if it doesn't rain but an inch and a half, the lid doesn't come off the sewer as it goes into the Lloyce Park. It just squirts up about, if it gets over eight inches high, the lid stays on the sewer. But this sewer is coming right out of the sewer system, straight into Lewis Street Park. We have talked to the city about this, and, oh, and I have pictures to share, I'm sorry I couldn't get them developed, but I will give them copies of all of these for council and the press of this happening, so, you know, it's clear. If it gets over eight inches high, the lid comes off, and cars could drive into there, another minor concern. But the raw sewage going into the park is, I think, is a real concern, and the city telling us just, well, we don't have enough money to fix that. We've got $29 million committed to spend out here on the loop on the sewer plant. I don't think that's going to help me out at Lloyce. Thank you.
Thank you. And although we can't enter into discussion, I did notice that myself. I did notice it was barricaded off as an answer of fact, and my city manager and I've discussed it and will continue to do so. Thank you very much. Item number 2A is a proclamation declaring the week ending on Father's Day 2016 as Men's Health Week. And actually, this is a proclamation that was begun, I believe, in about 2008 by the president, I think, whose wife cut him off from pizza, and he wanted everybody to suffer with him. But actually, it's very important that we pay attention to our health. We could save the nation millions of dollars if we would do so. So in light of that, I want to read this proclamation. We have no one here representing an organization, so I'll just read it to you. Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with Native American and African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. And whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from disease. And whereas men who are educated about the value of preventative health will be more likely to participate in health screening. And whereas fathers who maintain a healthy lifestyle are role models for their children and have happier, healthier children. And whereas Men's Health Network worked with Congress to develop Men's Health Week as a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive health attitudes and preventative health practices. And whereas Men's Health Week will focus on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, diabetes, mental health, prostate, testicular, and colon cancer. And whereas the citizens of this state are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups, now therefore, I, Bonnie White, Mayor of the city of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week ending on Father's Day 2016 as Men's Health Week in this city, and encourage all of our citizens to pursue preventative health practices and early detection efforts. And in light of that, I'd like a challenge to the men of this council between now and Father's Day to participate in something healthy, and bring that back to me next council meeting, and we'll announce that in our announcement section. You got it?
Good job.
Okay.
We get to define healthy, though.
You do. But you're one day behind, so double up on one day. Item three is a consent agenda item, but if you gentlemen wouldn't mind, just briefly, I have asked Todd, if he would, or Kyle, whoever's responsible for this, just for information's sake, as an effort at transparency, to just briefly tell us what we're doing. This is the construction contract with Jordan Restoration for the Kerr Regional History Center renovation Phase Two project.
Thank you. And I think Twinkies are now gluten-free, so I'm pretty sure that would be a healthy activity.
You can write that one down.
Thank you. Well, our history center really goes back to early 2000s, I think it was the year 2000. The city actually accepted a gift, and it was a combination gift that came to the city through the HEB Foundation, as well as from the trust.
Riemschel.
Thank you. Riemschel-Dearing Trust. And what that gift was, was a gift of the land and the building, in addition to $150,000 of seed money that would go towards funding the operation, as well as improvements and other related expenditures for that facility. The trust also started to provide a monthly allocation to the city of $1,500 a month, which they started paying immediately upon execution of that agreement. So with that, those funds were used, a portion of them, to help bring in some staffing, help run operations, and do some first phase renovations and some design work for that project. There was about, by the time I got here, there was about $100,000 of that initial seed that was left. We talked to city council, we provided or developed a list of improvements that we were going to try to utilize those funds for, because the gift agreement included a requirement that the city go to the trust and receive permission to utilize those funds. So we went through that process, and we identified a list of things that we need to do. So we had another follow-up meeting a couple years ago, and the trust provided another cash allocation, a gift of another $50,000 to be applied towards the project. And so, again, we came to council, and we had a list of uses that we wanted to utilize those funds for. There was some technology, there was some additional renovations within the interior of the building that we got authorization, and again, we applied to the trust to utilize those funds. So that's $200,000 of cash contribution. In addition, at that time, they also increased our monthly allocation to $2,000 a month. So last year, we had our annual meeting with the trust, and that trust provided about another quarter million dollars of cash towards this project. And with that, they asked us what we would plan to do with those funds, and we developed a list of improvements, which ultimately culminate into this particular contract that we have today. And at that meeting, they also notified us that they were going to increase our allocation again to $2,500 a month. This additional cash and back earnings are dollars that became available to this project because they've got some oil and gas ownerships and properties that had done better than they had forecast, and so there were some additional revenues that were here to come to us. So all this is important. You're probably asking me, why are you talking about this? It's because we've been able to fund the operations and fund the improvements at this facility at no cost to our citizens, for the most part. The not-most part is where we've applied a staff member from our library, part-time over at the history center when it's open, in order to provide assistance to people who are coming in to do ancestry and other types of research that are out there. So this project, again, utilizes the cash contributions that we've received from the Riemschel-Dearing Trust, and it's applying those to the improvements that we see. The improvements that we're talking about are finishing out and installing the elevator within the shaft that was originally built, interior finish-out space to, on the second floor, so we can utilize that for public spaces, for research, or display, those types of things. We've been approached by the Kerr County Regional Historical Commission to possibly try to display some historically significant items for a region in this facility. And so, so we've gone through that process. So we've spent about $26,000 in this phase of design, again, which comes out of donated dollars. So these, again, these funds looked at the structural analysis of the building. One of the key issues that we have is the second floor is not structurally sound enough to be able to hold major displays and heavy loads, stacks of books, those types of things. And so, the space for that area is really a programming space, it's an activity space, it's some research space, those types of things, and then wall-mounted displays through various rooms that are out there. So we have some kind of unique opportunities for that facility. So, again, this project and this bid addresses the interior finish-out, restroom, plumbing, mechanical, HVAC, some roof repair, as well as the elevator to finish out the building and make it completely accessible to our public. So our recommendation would be to approve this bid as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Parton. And the reason that I wanted to do that, all of us may be familiar with it, but just so that everyone would know, number one, that these items were approved by the trust that did donate the money for these improvements, and that's important for you to know, because people might ask about the amount of money that was spent. So are there any questions from council?
There's also no tax dollars being spent on this.
Right, that's what I meant, yeah.
Long-term, will they continue, do you expect they will continue the monthly stop in for operational use?
Yes, sir. We expect that that will continue. And so, you know, they'll tell you, they can't guarantee it'll continue to contribute at its same level, but in the last three, four years, it's definitely almost doubled.
I was able to meet with the board two years ago. They're very generous, and they're very history-minded, and they're looking after the trust as a long-term event. So it's got a bright future.
Thanks, Gary.
Other possibilities down the road, too, to complement it. So if there's no more questions, is there a motion?
Move through.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four to zero. Item number 4A is a public hearing and ordinance first reading. Ordinance number 2016-07 amending the city's zoning code to revise Section 11-1-12F. Temporary construction trailers and buildings to allow for the expanded use of such structures containing a savings and severability clause providing for a maximum penalty of fine of $2,000 and ordering publication. Mr. Robertson?
Thank you. As mentioned, back in April of 2016, we were approached by Habitat for Humanity to look at our zoning code and to address this section and possibly make an amendment to allow for temporary construction trailers to be permitted off the actual site of construction. So with that, we brought this to city council for direction on April 26, 2016, and we were directed by council to go ahead and look into amending the code and bring it before Planning and Zoning Commission and city council. On June 2nd, we brought this amendment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They did vote in favor of staff's recommendation, five to zero. They did also make a request that they could come back and revisit the design of temporary construction trailers. And I told them I would let the council know about that request. And today, we're bringing the text amendments that were recommended for approval by Planning and Zoning Commission, and that were created by staff. The second reading of this text amendment of the ordinance will be on June 28, 2016. Some of the main portion of the ordinance will allow for a temporary construction trailer to be located off-site of construction. The main purpose for this is, in some of these sites that Habitat for Humanity are trying to construct on are too small to fit a temporary construction trailer, all their construction equipment, and actually doing the construction work itself. So this will allow them to locate that construction trailer somewhere in the same subdivision of the site construction, and allow them to, and will allow them to go ahead and, I guess, keep on going without having to pay the cost of moving it from one site to another, having the issues of trying to construct and moving their tools every single day. We have put provisions in there that this permit issued by the Development Services Department will be reviewed annually. So that was one thing we thought would be important, that all the lots needed to be platted in the subdivision, and that construction, the construction trailer should never serve for areas outside of that subdivision. Here's kind of a preview of the before and after of the changes in the amendments, so you can see them side by side. There's not too many changes, but I think this will make a major impact and allow organizations like Habitat for Humanity, even individuals constructing on their own personal lots, or developers to go ahead and utilize those lots and try to get it done quicker in a more efficient manner. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Yeah, I noticed that the change was one of the basic changes, that rather than through the time of construction, it'll be for a period of 12 months, these permits. I had somebody bring me a permit the other day, that they were issued on one of these buildings, and they were given 180 days. I didn't know there was a time constraint now. I thought that's what we were mending, but that's what our building permits say, so I guess that'll be changed to a 12-month.
The 180 days for the building permit?
Uh-huh.
We're not looking at that, too.
The temporary, the temporary buildings.
Right, right, yes.
Any questions of Trent by council?
And Trent, Phase One, they had the temporary building on one of their lots for the whole construction of Phase One, correct?
Correct, yes.
So this is just kind of grandfathering it in for habit, well, for everybody, but making it a standard.
Right, and the issue is still that when people in the future come to the city, that the code's being read, the same, that the same provisions are for everyone on an equal fair basis.
Sounds good.
This requires a public hearing on the first reading, so at 6:26, I'll open a public hearing for agenda item number 4A. Would anyone from the public wish to speak about this item? Okay? If not, we'll close at 6:27. And if there's no more questions by council, then I would entertain a motion on the first reading. We've had a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four to zero. Item number five is ordinance second and final reading on ordinance number 2016-08, amending the comprehensive plan for the city of Kerrville, Texas pursuant to Chapter 213 of the Texas Local Government Code by revising the future land use map for an approximate 5.61 acre tract of land located adjacent to State Highway 16 South, Medina Highway, in between its intersection with Southway Drive South and Fairway Drive East, and changing the future land use of this area from low-density residential to mixed-use. Trent, please.
Thank you, yes. We brought this to the city council for the public hearing and first reading of the ordinance on May 24, 2016. City council did approve the, city council did go ahead and approve this amendment to the comprehensive plan, as well as the zoning change for this piece of property. Nothing has changed. We have not received any notices in opposition of any property owners within 200 feet, or anyone in favor. I believe at last meeting, some people did speak and had some questions, but since then, we have not heard any further information. But I'm here if you have any questions. And a public hearing is not required for the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions by council? Any questions from members of the public? If not, I'll entertain a motion on 5As for the second reading.
Move for approval?
Yes.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second for approval on the second reading ordinance 2016-08. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four to zero. Item number 5B is also a second and Item number 5B is also a second and final reading. Ordinance number 2016-09, amending the city's zoning code by changing the zoning district for an approximate 5.61 acre tract of land located adjacent to State Highway 16 South, in between its intersection with Southway Drive South and Fairway Drive East, and otherwise known as 1335 State Highway 16 South, by removing the approximate 5.61 acre tract from the R3 multifamily residential zoning district, placing it within the 34S zoning district containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause providing for a maximum penalty of fine of $2,000, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject.
Yes, if I just go back and quote what I just said in my previous presentation, no changes have been made, we have not heard any opposition to this as well. This is the second reading of the ordinance, and there's no public hearing required, and once again, here if you have any questions for me.
Any questions by council or the public? Again, this is the same property we just discussed in 5A. This is the second and final reading. Is there a motion on the second, is there approval for second and final reading on 5B?
I would move to approve.
There's been a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four to zero. Item number 5C is also a second reading. Ordinance number 2016-10 approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Group Mid-Tex Division regarding the company's 2016 rate review mechanism filings declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with a negotiated settlement, finding the rates to be set by the settlement tariffs to be just and reasonable and in the public interest, requiring the company to reimburse ACSC's reasonable rate-making expenses, determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act, adopting a savings clause declaring an effective date, and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and ACSC's legal counsel. Mr. Hayes?
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening, council. This is a pursuant to an application from Atmos for a rate increase. Atmos Energy Corporation Mid-Tex Division, which of course is the gas supplier for Kerrville in this area. All the information is in the packet, nothing has changed since the second reading of the ordinance. The ordinance, and its approval, will approve the attached tariffs to the ordinance, which will result in an imposition of new rates by Atmos, increase the typical, for the typical monthly bill for a residential customer by 2.43 percent, and a typical commercial customer will see an increase of 1.43 percent. And again, no changes since first reading.
Again, this is second reading for this ordinance. Any questions by council or a member of the public? I'll entertain a motion to approve for the second reading of ordinance number 2016-10.
So, move.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four to zero. Thank you, Mike. Item number 5D is ordinance number 2016-11, amending the budget for fiscal year 2016 to account for the completion of various capital improvement projects within the city's water and sewer fund, and reallocating said project balances to other capital improvement projects within the same fund. Mr. Parton?
Thank you, Mayor. The only change that you've seen it from the original version, we had $100,000 differential between the funds being allocated and the funds being saved, or removed from the original project allocation to the new projects that were there. So, with the exception of that, the remaining balance of this amendment remains consistent. I will say, we did open our bids today for the new UTC building, and those bids came in just a little bit over $1 million, so there's another roughly $300,000 here that we get to, again, repurpose to some additional projects within the utility fund from this amendment as well. Anyway, again, our recommendation was to approve this, let you know it as presented.
Any questions by council? Just for council's clarification of, I did ask Mr. Parton, and I think I brought it forth in the last meeting, it was unusual to see a $1.7 million figure under budget, but we are going to utilize that well, and as he said, a little better than we thought we would, and it is going to be repurposed for a utility-related building. So, those were just questions that I had, and questions that the public may have had. Any questions or comments by council? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve on the second reading, ordinance number 2016-11.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes four to zero. Item number 6A is a funding request from Kerr Economic Development Corporation for its fiscal year 2017 budget in an amount not to exceed $24,500. Jonas?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just go back to 2A. Just want to say that I'm trying to do as much of my part as possible. I'm training for a marathon right now, although that my waistline is not cooperating with that, but my miles are.
I'll write it down.
So, along with the city manager, I know that we're pretty diligent in, in trying to, trying to do our part to stay healthy.
Thank you.
But this is, this is our annual request. If you look in your packet, it appears that our funding request is increasing, but to explain that is, when I came on staff, I, KEDC had a budget of $330,000. So, we cut that to about 200, just south of 260. And so, and then also between, there was a gap between my predecessor and myself, so there was about a six-month period where KEDC was dormant. So, we kind of had a, an accumulated asset. We had about $180,000 in our operational budget when I, when I came on staff. So, the strategy that we undertook to be true to you all, our stakeholders, and the taxpayers, was to underfund the organization for a period of time to, to eat away at that reserve. That has been accomplished. So, right now, we're right back up to what we would like to call our baseline numbers. We're slightly north of that, which would be $25,000 for you all, so we're requesting 2,4500. I ran the numbers today, looking at our economic impact analyses that we conduct with a third party for the projects that we've worked on this past year, and the city gain, is aimed to gain about $9 million from the James Avery and the Mooney, Mooney projects, and that's direct, that's direct revenue, that's not incorporating any, any indirect, and that also includes the tax abatements and economic development incentives that you all have contributed to those accounts. So, open for questions. You guys are a great partner, we're very, very happy with who we are, we're very proud of everything that we've accomplished, and we want to continue that partnership with you all.
Any questions by council?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I was able to attend a meeting with Jonas and Charlie, and I appreciate you guys working so hard for our city, and you guys were professional, you were on target, and you had all the answers for these potential business partners, so I appreciate the work you guys are doing.
Thank you, thank you, Gary.
Just, just for clarification for the public, if you're not familiar, that KEDC was formed by EIC, is that correct? It's a consulting firm, it's a private?
We, we are a 501(c)(6) nonprofit that contracts with the EIC and the city.
Yeah, and so, they are funded by City of Kerrville, EIC, Kerr County, and Cape
And the public.
Yeah, okay. And one question I think I had for you, Mr. Parton, is the, I hadn't heard back, when EIC makes their decision, does that come back to council for approval?
Yeah, I sent you an email response this afternoon.
I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
And EIC has a three-year funding agreement that provides, we're in the second year of that three-year funding.
That's what I was thinking.
So, so that is a funding agreement that's already been approved by EIC, it's been through the public hearing process, as well as been approved by city council. So, the next step down that process will be an annual application through the EIC budget, then the EIC budget has to come to city council for review and approval, and the EIC budget is incorporated into the Kerrville city budget, which I'll consider up here.
Yeah, I had remembered that, but I couldn't remember exactly the terms of that three-year obligation, so. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on 6A, the funding request from Kerr Economic Development Corporation for fiscal year 2017. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes four to zero.
Thank you all, we really look forward to continued success and a great partnership.
Thank you, Jonas. Bring them in. Okay, item number 6B, discuss extension or renewal of the interlocal agreement for the continued existence of a joint airport board to provide management of Kerrville-Kerr County Airport. Todd?
I will say, Mr. Titus says those to all of his donors, so you're not that special. The city and county have been operating the airport through a joint airport board. This current contract is terming after five years from its original agreement. So, the original term was for one year with four one-year automatic annualized renewals. So, we are now in the final months of the fourth and final automatic renewal of that agreement. So, it really is time for city council to sit down and visit with the county to look at what you want to do with the agreement moving forward. So, the recommendation that I had for you would be to go ahead and designate two members of city council to meet with representatives of Kerr County to discuss and negotiate any new terms. You know, your options would be to look at additional extensions to this agreement, or to negotiate a modified agreement, or negotiate a new agreement. This agreement does expire on September 30 of 2016, so you do need to have an agreement in hand, or an extension of this agreement in hand by midnight of October 1 of 2016. So, the recommendation, again, was for two council liaisons to negotiate with county representatives, and then to really establish a deadline by the last Friday of July to have those negotiations concluded, and for the negotiated terms to be brought back to the commission and to the council for review and consideration. Keep in mind that that gives you a few more meetings, if there's some additional questions or some additional work that the commission and the council would like to work through. Again, that's our recommendation, you all two members, the deadline, and then trying to bring back to you for your first meeting in August, the fruits of those negotiations.
So, council, city manager and I had a discussion this week, and Mr. Andrew and I are actually the liaison members to the airport, the Joint Airport Advisory Planning Committee, and so, we discussed that that would be the natural appointments we feel like to this group, and if you so choose, then Mr. Andrew and I will meet together and go over and review the terms of the agreement, have discussions as allowed and appropriate with county representatives, and then we're happy to do that and bring that back to council as Todd recommended by July 29, so that we can move forward with any recommendations or extension.
Can I just ask one quick question? I don't think it's out of bounds. Mr. Moser, you represent the county on there, or Mr. Moser, excuse me. Is there any tweaking that you know of? I mean, this has obviously been a good contract we've had for five years, and, I mean, do you?
Yeah, we're happy to sit down with the city and discuss that we don't see any, any tweaking needed, okay? I mean, it, that operation out there is running like a smooth oil machine. Just by way, when I was on the airport board, was it four years ago, I believe, Steve, that city and county were both contributing 200,000 a year to the operation. This year, we're down to $37,000 per year, each per year, and Steve made a personal commitment, it'll be zero next year. So, no, I think it's a, you know, I don't know of any major issues, but we'd be happy to look at anything with you guys.
I have spoken to a couple of the board members, just out of curiosity, do they have any tweaking they felt? And none that I know of, but I hope that we will have a way, as the council studies this, if there are things they want brought forward. I guess we'll forward those to Todd, and then he can bring them back to whoever is appointed to fill this position. Otherwise, it's difficult to have a conversation unless you have it in this form. I'm not, I sense that we're not quite ready to have that discussion of what we might want to bring forward, but I hope that the rest of the council, all of us, would forward things to Todd, Todd disseminate them backward. Having read it, I think there's only, I'd only have one question, that I think we're supposed to appoint three members instead of two, Mayor. I did catch that.
Two, the planning committee.
Page seven. Six-two, maybe I'm missing something. Six-two, 6A, two.
Which shall consist of no more than two council members. We could have three representatives.
Right, we're supposed to have three representatives, so I think we're supposed to appoint someone off the council.
Okay, we can, we can look at that as an agenda item, and if council would prefer...
So, that actually be Mr. Parton in this case, or I mean, I don't mean...
Is that, I doubt, I'm just out of curiosity.
May I comment on that? Airport Planning Committee was established four, five years ago with the, as a matter of fact, it was a recommendation of Mayor Wampler, that that be established. It's been in existence, it meets every quarter or so, but it's two members, the city council and the financial person is what it has been, two members from the county commissioners and the financial person, and that constitutes, and then the two members from the airport board, so that constitutes the planning committee.
I understood it was two council members, I was just trying to figure who the third person was supposed to be.
Ms. Jarvis coming with us.
That's been the financial person in the past.
Thank you. And if council would, if, if there is a feeling that we don't need to have discussion outside of this chamber, then we can each peruse the contract, and we can schedule it for a future, maybe, we may need two, we'll, we'll decide what we need to do at a meeting, and if that works, then that'll work for me as well. So, action would be to put it on a future agenda for discussion of the interlocal agreement with any recommendations that council members may have. Is that right?
Yeah, what did you guys bring back to us?
So, you are recommending that we do a liaison?
Well, I, I would.
Yeah, I recommend that Bonnie, you and, you and Gene and Sandra move forward, is that...
Okay, that'll be fine. And we'll bring, we'll bring something back to council on, on our mutual decisions.
Yeah, and, and I do want to compliment the, the planning committee and the airport board and county commissioners for making this work. So, this is a great example of cooperation.
Well, it's the, yeah, the airport board have been extraordinarily successful in what they've pulled off here.
Hats off.
Okay, so do we need that in the form of motion? Okay, would somebody?
I made the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Motion carries four to zero. Item 16, request from Kerr County to waive any and all city building permit, plan check and inspection fees associated with Kerr County's expansion of the Kerr County jail. Mr. Parton?
Again, I won't take too much time, because I think we have a couple gentlemen that are here maybe to speak to this on behalf of the commission as well. You have received in your packet a formal request from the commissioners' court to waive the plan review, inspection, and building permit fees for the new proposed jail facility. It's an $11 million estimated value of that facility. So, the city's permit fees for plan review and for inspections calculate out to $82,000 and a little bit more, about 82.5% to our fee schedule that we have established. And so, those fees are designed to go back and recoup and cover the expenses for, again, the review of plans, as well as for the conduct of the inspection process and review of plan process, so. So, with that, request is coming to you guys.
And the, the $82,000, those are hard costs to the city?
Well, that's, that's a fee rate calculation, and those fees are based upon our analyst operating expenses and a typical cost of what it takes to be able to serve projects. So, a project this magnitude, we would actually take those plans that are submitted, and we would send those to our consultant, because it's a large institutional plan, and so, by our policy, we, we send those out for that review. So, because we have one plans examiner in our organization, so, but we conduct all of our inspections within our current staffing levels in-house.
So, the consultant would be a hard, a hard number.
Exactly. One of the questions that we all had discussed very early on was, what does the inspection process entail? You've got the state of Texas that has some protocols and some criteria that they have established for the design and construction of detention facilities, and then... established for the design and construction of detention facilities, and then we also have the city's building codes that are there, so electrical, plumbing, mechanical, life safety codes that also are there. What the state does is the state has a jail commission that has an inspector who goes through a process to first review the schematic and the plans that are come forward and operational plans. Then there's a process by which that they'll come do some periodic inspections to ensure that the project is being constructed according to those plans, and then ultimately, there's a final process to ensure that the project is completed. One of the things that they require, they look for in order to allow this facility to go into operation is the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the city. And so, by issuing a certificate of occupancy, our building official and our staff are saying that we've verified that this building has met the codes of the city and the design parameters of the city. Well, if we don't do inspections and we don't go through that process, then we can't really issue a certificate of occupancy. Plus, there's some potential liability issues on issuing that and not having gone through the due diligence portion to that. So, for that reason, we really need to maintain our standard protocols for plan review and for the periodic inspection, and with the objective ultimately to ensure that it is designed and built to the appropriate codes, and so that we can issue that certificate of occupancy, so that the facility can be opened according to state law and Texas jail standard requirements. So, unless there's any more questions, and me at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Sheriff Hirholtzer to maybe address you guys.
That's fine, Todd, I just, just, and you can come sheriff, but I just wanted to read, because I did have a meeting with Mr. Parton about this, and I said, do we have, my question was simply, do we have any overlapping fees? In other words, something that we would charge that the state is also charging? And he came back with a volume about this thick from the state, and in the words of the executive director of the Texas Commission on Jail Standards, this was his answer, Sheriff, so that you don't yell at us, okay? And so that people will know, it says, "We conduct plan reviews at the schematic, design development and construction document phase. At the end of construction prior moving inmates into the facility, we conduct an occupancy inspection to ensure that the facility was built in accordance with the plans submitted and improved their plans, and that all systems are functional." That's the extent of what their CO investigation is. The county is required to have a CO, and this is from Mr. Wood, is required to have a certificate of occupancy from the local jurisdiction, and a fire marshal's inspection available to us, as well as a certified test and balance for HVAC, smoke and fume removal system. We do not conduct periodic onsite inspections during construction that are traditionally the domain of local code inspectors for electrical, structural, plumbing, et cetera. So, that may answer some people's questions.
And that's very true, that's exactly what they do. Although, the smoke evac, I think that's a little bit different, because they're down there constantly testing it, but, and making sure that it does pass, that's one of their big life safety. First off, thank you for giving us just at least this opportunity, Mayor, and council people, I really appreciate it. This is, as all of y'all are aware, is a very extensive project that I probably should have had my head examined for even mentioning that we're overcrowded and ending up in this result, because I think the last thing any sheriff that's in his right mind would ever want is more inmates and more employees, and that's exactly the headache we're going to get out of this. But, the project itself is a $15 million bond issued project. It will add 144 beds to the facility while it's actually losing eight of the current beds. So, the total facility upon completion, which is estimated anywhere from 15 to 18 months, will be 328-bed facility, maximum security. And there are design difference and building difference and code difference between minimum, medium and maximum security. Issue we have, and that we are facing a lot of this, some of y'all may be aware of it with just what's occurred in the last week or two, our current jail system is extremely overcrowded. We had to already farm out inmates last weekend to another county, because we were over, to be in total compliance, you should be, and a rule of thumb is about 80% of your bed space, you should have inmates. Our bed space is 192 beds. This last weekend, I had 196 inmates. I'm overcrowded at 153. So, the county is facing having to farm a lot of inmates out. This building project is not only adding a new attached kind of dorm to the back of the jail of the 144 beds, it's remodeling about 90% of the inside of the jail, which means over a month without a kitchen and medical and laundry and all those things are having to be contracted out of the county's budget. The one thing that we're asking, and when I got this and dealing with Hoosier Construction, they delivered the plans, the first part of the plan review, I think, is in process right now, we paid that first fee, but the fees were $27,512.50 for a plan review. And then the permit fees were $55,025. Now, what was explained to me is the way you get the permit fee in the city's fee structure is you double the plan review fee, and that's how you come up with the permit fee. The county is very, very willing and should, and we are obligated, I think, to have to pay the actual cost to the city of what it costs your personnel on inspectors or the plan review or anything else. But, every bit of what we're both spending is taxpayer dollars. We're just shuffling it from one pot to another, okay? And I truly think that we ought to look at that, and if we can save the taxpayers money in this by actually only going with our own true costs of what it costs us each, I think that would be a better option for all of us, you know, because I don't get the option of saying, "Sorry, we're full city, take your inmate somewhere else." We still have to take them and farm them out, and that costs us $60 a day per inmate, not counting medical and everything else. So, there's going to be some fees that were occurring in this project that, due to our population, are going to be extremely expensive. And I would just ask that anywhere we can cut costs to this project, that you would consider it, and if it's possible, I think we would appreciate any kind of cost cuts we can have in these fees.
Sheriff, I don't mean to put you on the spot, and maybe you don't have that number readily available, but I was just wondering, how much, I know in every budget design, do you know how much the county is being allowed in this project for design, schematic, construction, overall professional fees?
Well, the actual, the estimated project, I couldn't tell you that, I'd have to go back and get my book, Mayor, on that. The cost of the construction part itself is supposed to be a little over $11 million, and the rest is going to be architects and all the rest of this that we're going through, okay, Hoosiers and, because that's an at-risk construction manager, however they figure it. I'm not a contractor, I just...
I just wondered what, what was allowed for, you know, architects and engineering and professional fees that this may come under if they allowed for it and the cost of the project?
They did not, and I, and please don't take what I'm saying wrong. When this first came up several weeks ago on the actual fee cost, I think everybody in the project was astounded, okay? When I first talked to the jail commission, they said they've never, ever heard of fees that high. I don't know, okay? I know this amount would never have been projected in, because we did not have those kind of figures. And talking with the jail commission and those that they're involved in, some cities waive it, some charge nominal, some charge their full price, you know, it's just something counties have to go through to try and see what we can come up with, but we're all serving the same public, is all I got to say. It's a facility that hopefully will last the next 20 years for all of us, and if you do have inmates, city, county or otherwise, and I know the chief's back here, that are in, that are having to be housed in a facility that is adequate and meets everybody's standards, then the liability is a whole lot less on every one of us.
If I could get clarification from Mr. Parton, the plan check fee of $27,512.50, that, as I understand it, is farmed out to a consultant, so those are, those are hard, as Gary said, fees. That's something we have to pay, so that's just a pass-through, that part.
And, and if that is a true pass, that fee's already been paid by the county, because we needed to get this project moved.
Oh, it has the full amount?
We agreed that if that's more than just a pass-through, maybe the county could see some of that back, but the county had to get the project going, or else we were going to be way delayed on getting it off the ground.
Sheriff, you mentioned one thing that is slightly inaccurate, that we do not serve the same public. We represent the residents inside the city limits, who also pay county taxes. So, I don't want to, I don't want to waive any true cost to the county, although wherever we could save money for the county, we're saving our citizens' taxpayer money also. So, we're, you know, we represent the citizens inside the city limits only, and so we would want to help wherever we can, but I'm not going to donate our tax dollars and incur cost on top of paying county taxes and city taxes.
And I can appreciate your comments, Councilman Stark, but I do truly, of course, me being county sheriff, and it doesn't matter whether city limit signs or county signs, you know, I truly do believe that we all represent the same public in this community.
Sheriff, you and Chief Knight and Chief Smith do. But, I said it up here, and I only represent our citizens.
Right, but there's, there's, you know, well, all I can do, you know, without going into budgets and revenues and what's been budgeted by the city, all I'm saying, I like my hat underneath the chair, is we're kind of coming with hat in hand, and asking that if there is something that we can work together on, on these costs to help limit it for us and for that jail facility, which is used actually more so by the city than by the county on the inmates that go into it, okay? And I would like to see us do that.
And I like Todd's recommendation that we do go through all of the inspections, because the Development Office is a great office, I always love it when I have a project and I have a second set of eyes looking at one of my projects. So, I would highly recommend that we do go through all the, all of the inspections that we, that we can come up with, and maybe we can direct Todd to come up with true cost, and then just only pass on true cost and not, you know, just a flat fee or whatever.
And I would recommend you go through all of the inspections too, because that saves every one of us liabilities. Todd and I totally agree on that, but true cost.
That's what we were discussing the other day, you know, what would be man-hours involved, you know, because you know, Sheriff, you pay your deputies, and I think you had a little discussion about transporting other patients the other day, and so, you know, we, we pay their salaries from the city taxpayers, and you're one of them.
I agree.
And then we also, portion of that is covered by the permit fees, as Todd mentioned earlier, but we want to be fair, and you want to be fair, and so, I was thinking the, the county taxes all of us citizens in the county for animal control, but there are some charges, there are some fees when they go out, you know, as well. So, I sort of saw the fee situation in a similar light, but that having been said, I was hoping that we would know what there was in the budget allowed, not to run you over in excess, and things like, as you said, were not anticipated. If there were a way to cover what you budgeted for, and we don't want to burden you any more than that, and if there's a way that we could reconcile that with our man-hours. And I did notice, for instance, there are two different plumbing codes. Our code and what the state requires are, well, new and an old, I don't know where we fall under that, but there may be some running back and forth a number of times to reconcile those issues, and so normally, in the private sector, you know, when the inspectors go back out, there's a reassessment fee, we wouldn't want to look at any of that. But, having said all those nice things, Stephen, you brought this up, what's your thought?
Well, this came up in the conversation with Commissioner Reeves, and I think, of course, the initial hope was we'd just say, "Sure, y'all go ahead," but there are some real hard costs involved. Todd and I have talked about this also a little bit, and Commissioner Reeves and I had a long discussion this morning. I think he was going to be here, but he had a meeting conflict. And one thing that was discussed was doing comparable services, you know, whether it was, we waived these fees and the county would come back and waive maybe some of the cost to keep some of the prisoners down the road to where, I mean, at the end of the day, the guys in the department who were writing the permits, they got to come to work, whether they're working on your permit or somebody else's, so the real costs outside of those employees would be if we had to send it to a consultant, that's an outside cost, and that's a real cost. And the same thing with the deputies, they're going to be there, whether you're housing our prisoners or your prisoners, they still got to show up to work. So, at the end of the day, that's where it kind of came down to, instead of us writing you a check, you a check and you writing us a check, we would just waive this fee, and it would probably make both of our budgets look a little bit better that we lowered that cost, but I don't know what the attorneys feel about that. The good old horse trading thing, you know, I'm a big fan of swapping, I think it's, you know, services, and it's a, it's good for everybody involved, except Uncle Sam possibly, but...
Hopefully, they're not involved in this.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilman Fine, if I may speak freely, and this is totally on me, I would love to see a whole lot more of that between the city and the county on the swapping.
I think there's some comparable services.
A lot of things, I think there are, you know. I know it would help my budget. Every time EMS gets called to the jail, I have to pay over $800.
But, I do want it to be clear, so the public knows what's going on too. I mean, I think that's, that's important. I don't want somebody coming back saying, "You got something and we didn't," or vice versa.
But, the one thing the county does want to do is make sure, we're not asking for it for anything, or a total waive, or it's kind of done. You know, I do think whatever the true costs are, whether it's the inspectors going out, or the plan review or anything else, you know, nobody's asking for that to be waived, but otherwise, I think we could work something together.
I would recommend that we ask Todd to come up with a figure with what true costs are estimated, and then bring that back to City Council.
If, if, I might interject, I know that it was mentioned earlier, it's about a 15 to 18-month project, so it's not like it's a month-long deal where you have two or three trips. It's, it's a very involved thing, and hopefully, it'll be seamless, but you never know. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with Councilman Stark, that if maybe we could defer this until, it's not going to be dollar for dollar, I'm sure, but some form of equitable, I know it's about $50 a day, I believe that we pay for the prisoners, I don't know how many a day, maybe you have an average, maybe from last year's budget, maybe we could throw that into the mix and see if that and the length of time...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think Mrs. Yarborough might have, we're creating headaches for her if we don't, if we don't keep it solid, concrete and...
Clear.
And clear. I don't want to put Mrs. Yarborough in a, in an awkward position of trying to tally on a separate set of books, "Okay, the county gave us this, and now we owe them that," and...
I think we have to, we have to set each one almost as a separate, you know?
Right.
Okay, this is for the jail fees, we're going to, we're going to do this quid pro quo if we decide to do that. For me, the important thing is the hard costs, you've agreed to that, I think we set that aside, and we're really talking about the $55,000 permit fees, and so, to Councilman Stark's comment, I would simply say, as part of that request to the city manager and to the city secretary, and likewise to the commissioners, we got to decide how complex we want to make this, because it can become more burdensome than beneficial. So, setting aside the 20, we're talking about the $55,000, if there's a quid pro quo that everybody's comfortable with, that's accountable easily, that's fine. Otherwise, I think we ought to go back and then decide how much of those fees would we be willing to waive, because we don't need other accounting nightmares, for sure.
Well, there's a concern about setting a precedent too.
Right, exactly.
On the city's side, and I think the main difference between this relationship with the county is we do have other interlocal agreements with them where we don't necessarily, with some of the other taxing authorities and other government agencies, where this is simpler with you guys, and, you know, we've worked out deals over the, in the past that were good for everybody and hopefully saved some, some taxpayer dollars, that was the intent anyway. I don't think I've seen one where it ended up costing more money, but I'm all for getting some hard figures and, you know, as long as everybody understands that hopefully the school doesn't come in and they want to do something, you know, because the next thing you know, we won't be getting any fees for all these services, and the fees are really just meant to cover the cost.
Right.
I mean, that's where they're... I mean, that's where they're...
Now, I have been, and I'm not trying to say, unfortunately, there are some cases, or at least one I know of, their precedent may have been set. But what... The only other issue I would have is, one way or another, okay, if we can work out the hard costs sooner than later, by the time the plan review gets done, they really want to break ground. We're already kind of behind what we really wanted. And even if it takes putting this on the back burner and getting the permits issued at whatever time, the city and the county, I think, can work that out. But right now, we just...
Yeah, I don't think deciding on what the hard cost would be would slow down issuing permits.
Issuing of the permits, that's only...
Am I correct, Todd?
Yeah, I just ran the calculation in my mind, and I'm pretty sure if they pay the hard costs and give us 10 years of free jail, occupancy will probably be good.
You like that deal, huh, Todd?
Yeah, just the carrying cost of that, you know, that...
Well, by the bills that I send to cap tonight, I don't think 10 years is going to work.
Nine and a half, nine and a half, done.
Well, why don't we see what we can come back with next meeting, if that would be timely for you, the 28th of this month? Is that timely? And if we can work it out equitably, if we can't, then we'll have another recommendation from council. But if that would be all right with you.
Thank you.
Just to make sure, we're only talking about the $55,000.
That's correct. Yes, he's already paid the plan.
We'll do our best, because it's in everybody's best interest to get this down.
Thank you all very much, and thank you all for giving us the time this evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you for not arresting us.
The night's still young.
Yeah. Item 6D, termination of city's application for reuse permit, application number 12880 dated May the 8th, 2012, and submitted by the city of Curville to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Stewart is not here tonight, so Mr. Parton?
We had, back in May 8th of 2012, submitted to TCQ an application. That application had contemplated that the city would develop or get a permit that allow us to be able to divert at Flat Rock Lake, an amount of water from the lake that was equivalent to the amount of effluent that we were putting into Third Creek from the wastewater plant. And then, we had had some choices on what to do with that water. Take it to the plant, or develop a well, or some other system to be able to treat it, and then to inject it into an ASR system. That was before we contemplated the reuse water project. So, as we got into this particular permit application, you know, it carried on for a while, so we really not were deemed to be administratively complete for probably till, like, 2015. At that time, we were in the process of, like I said, moving forward with our analysis on feasibility of the reuse water project, and we were developing and devising that plan. As we were going through that process, probably really towards the end of 2015 or so, TCQ staff came forward and said, hey, you know, we are in a process needing to proceed forward with these permits. What would the city like to do? At that time, we said, hey, we are developing and appointing a reuse water committee. We've got this project that we're moving forward, and we would like to defer a consideration on this particular application until we know what we're going to do with our reuse water project. So, we proceeded forward with reuse water project. We went through a reuse water committee, and ultimately had a recommendation presented that talked about doing a reuse water project. In the course of that discussion from TCQ, there are a number of things that changed, rule changes, and additional stipulations and conditions that were brought forward through TCQ. And so, one of the primary conditions was that the amount of water that we would receive would really be a prorata portion equivalent to what is generated out of groundwater, with the concept being that water that is taken out of surface water, that's treated, is supposed to go back in and continue on downstream. The additional amount of water that would be contemplated would be what was generated from the ground and treated and goes back in. Our ratio roughly is 15 to 20% groundwater on a year-to-year basis. So, what we're looking at is, best-case scenario, having about 20% of the amount or volume of effluent actually physically discharged available to us to be able to take back out. If you compare that to the reuse water project, we get to withhold and utilize all that capacity potentially. All that we can handle and process, we get to utilize with the project that we're looking at today. Another issue that's really kind of come forward in looking at this is that this permit would be considered junior permit to all other senior permits within the Guadalupe River Basin, meaning that in the event that we got into drought stages or drought contingency stages, the South Texas Water Master, the state Water Master, would actually be able to curtail this, and this would be one of the first rights curtailed. So, the concern was, okay, we're junior, we have a lot less volume of water than we had originally contemplated or hoped that we could get permitted to do, and then ultimately, we could be curtailed almost really entirely from this right. The other issue is that, once deemed administratively complete, we're able to now go through the process of permit authorization and permit granting. The TCQ director has an opportunity to be able to grant a permit. However, the permit, particularly this one, is also subject to public hearing and public notice. So, in the process, TCQ says, we're considering issuing this. We have to send out a notice to all the water rights holders within the Guadalupe River Basin, and then there's a 30-day timeline to be able to provide response back. And there can be a request for a contested case hearing for the permit. And what a contested case is, is that's a process where we actually have a hearing that goes to TCQ, to the board, where we have to present evidence and present a case with regard to the permit, the effects of the permit, and go through a process. That's a very detailed process that can be very costly. We had talked to an attorney in Austin, who TCQ contacted on behalf of the city, that had told us that we could estimate up to half a million dollars in fees and costs associated with taking this permit through. So, at the end of the day, when you look at the amount of water you get, you look at the relative firmness of this water, meaning it's really not firm, and you look at the costs associated with going through the process, and ultimately, maybe not even have a permit issued, or some significant conditions on the permit, it did not make sense to proceed forward with this permit process, especially we have some other alternatives that are there. And I'll be honest, if I, you know, look at this project now, taking the reuse water project out of it, I would still recommend that you terminate this application process at this point, because I just don't know that it's giving you the best alternative, the best return, and the best option to try to utilize this resource. It's very, very limiting, restricted, and it's a very soft permit wise, from a seniority perspective. So, recommendation to council really is to stop and to terminate the application process. We can notify TCQ. One of the things we talked to TCQ about was that to let us know if there was a need to proceed forward with the application before notifying them, and to allow us to work through the process. And so, we haven't notified them. They knew that we were evaluating other options, particularly the reuse water project, which they'd been working closely with us on, and that we were getting close to coming back to council to get some direction on what you wanted to do with regard to continuing with this application process, terminating or modifying. You have really three options: continue as presented, to stop the application process, or to amend the application. That amendment would be to amend the request to only permit that portion that is related back to the groundwater generation. So, those are your options before you. Yet, my recommendation to you would be to stop this application process.
Just for clarification, Todd, the status of the application right now is, it's not approved, but it's worked its way through the bureaucracy of the Water Commission, and it's ready to go into hearings? Is that a fair statement?
It's administratively approved. All the information they require is there.
That's what I said, the bureaucracy of it.
But it's not, hasn't gone through the technical review for approval, is what...
That's correct. So, we're deemed to be administratively complete. The executive director is now ready to look at a balance of technical data that is needed to be able to evaluate. There's some preliminary assessments that's gone into the project. So, those costs that were cited are the costs to go through the technical review process, the legal review process, and their potential challenges that we're probably likely to face. And I think it's very likely that we'll be contested in this application.
Basically, from pulling the paperwork and going through a timeline for those who weren't here, and I wasn't at the beginning either, but in '12, when we made the application, they wrote back in October and asked a lot of questions, and wanted us to clarify what percentage we took from the ground, what from the surface. And that kind of gave us a clue to get permission from other entities downstream, county, because we were querying a diversion point at Flat Rock. And I think we amended to change and amend the diversion point to, like, three or four places upstream from there. But I understand what Todd is saying with their recommendation. It looked like, from the get-go, that they were only going to let us capture 20% of what we put in the creek, because those waters belong to the state, once you do that, to clarify it for the public. And so, I believe in '13, that's why we hired Freezing Nichols to do the feasibility study and see what other option might be out there. And so, actually, in February 15, February, not November, their statement that we're administratively complete was there, but it's kind of sat there until now, waiting on the completion of the study and everything on the retention pond. So, kind of, that's the brief history. It wouldn't behoove us to keep it alive for 20%. I mean, that's nothing. So, and it would be costly, as he said. The only thing that I wanted to establish, and Mr. Parton mentioned it earlier, is that, and this is the part that's always been a question mark in my mind, and TCQ did establish, and I believe your understanding is the same as well, that all of the effluent that we keep in the system, we can account for. If it's put into the waters, we can. It's the state. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I didn't hear anything other than that. So, I don't see any negative... I mean, I don't see any positive reasons for keeping this particular application with those criteria alive.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mayor. That's well-stated.
So, do I... Are there any questions, or anyone from the audience have a question or comment, council? If not, if there's a clear understanding, I would entertain a motion on 6D, termination of city's application for reuse permit number 12880 dated May 8th, 2012.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes 4 to 0. Item number 7A is review and discuss Rule 4.4 that I briefly read a part of earlier. This is not an action item. It's for information and discussion. And Mr. Andrew, you asked it be on?
Sure. I want to choose my words very carefully to try to make this as positive, which I think it is. And by the way, I'm very pleased with today, the activities, how it's worked. I had multiple inputs during the campaign that would raise the concerns about what was perceived by the citizens as an eroding, this is prior to the election, obviously, some erosion of the decorum that was in the council meetings, and the proper decorum for the council meetings. And that, obviously, is prior to the current presiding officers in the election. So, I agreed that I would raise this issue regardless of what came up, you know, and so, that is the thing. I would remind us that one of my favorite sayings are that, "These are meetings held in public with public meetings declared differently." And those are very different things. Meetings held in public and public meetings are, in fact, different issues. And sometimes, I fear in the past that we may have confused those. But, and also, remind us that, and we all already talked about these earlier, the mayor quoted that, in our own adopted Roberts Rules of Order, as amended by Curville, city council, whatever you want to call them, yeah, we talk about, we should be focused on issues. We should be focused on pushing, questioning issues, not at home in attacks towards individuals. And I certainly believe strongly that that is a position, that we continue to do that. I looked at the speaker program, and I would simply ask that maybe we consider putting that quote on the speaker's form. It's not there. I checked again today.
I had asked Mr. Parton to look at that, and I think he was going to flash something up there, but I think I agree.
I think it's a good... I know it's sometimes, it puts the presiding officer, particularly if that presiding officer, whomever it may be, Mayor Protem or whatever, in a difficult situation, should the comments be, personal comments being made towards that particular individual. It puts them in a difficult time to decide, do I gavel this quiet, because it can be perceived as self-serving. I think that one of the things I would ask them... I want to pause just a second. These are comments that are very difficult to have, somewhat awkward conversations in public with the open meetings law. You know, it's not something we can go sit around, okay, this is how we really want to operate. So, sometimes you get to see the... How sausage is made. But I would say that I feel the responsibility, should the attacks become personal, particularly towards the presiding officer, that I'm going to feel free to simply to turn to the mayor, or the Mayor Protem, whoever's presiding, and say, I think these are inappropriate, and I'd ask you to gavel them quiet, because I think it's... It puts whoever that position is in an awkward position to a little bit self-serving. And so, I'm going to simply... And I hope the rest of the council members will do that. Not asking for any actions, I just simply say that, remind ourselves that comments can only be made, and we only make comments regardless, whether it's one word or six paragraphs, from the podium when recognized and identified and signed in. And I will compliment today, it has been very well done, as was the prior meeting. But I think some of us know that some, in the past, that has not always been true. And there is an amount of decorum that needs to occur. And so, that's the end of my soliloquy.
It's always a good reminder.
And Roberts Rules of Order were never formally adopted by the city, in case anybody's...
Oh, I'm sorry. I just... I was being facetious.
Yeah, but no, no, I'm just saying, it never has formally been adopted, so every mayor or presiding officer has kind of handled it their own way. And sometimes, that's good. Sometimes, that's not so good. And sometimes, it's extremely inconsistent. So, I'm min-bony on keeping it moving, moving in.
Right. Likewise.
Thank you. Well-spoken. And I think we all are all in agreement. We all have an understanding of that. And, you know, we are representing, we are representing this city, and I think we are to be held accountable in how we present ourselves at all times. So, I appreciate everybody here, too, you know, among ourselves, where to respect one another, too. So, any other comments or questions?
I agree. I like it.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Item 8A is appointments to Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. And this is something begun by the... We approved it as a council. It was begun by the former mayor. It's a new thing for us, and Caitlin and I have been working on it. Would you like to come and present for us?
Yes, the new mayor and council. I have received three new applications for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. Those applications, you each should have copies attached with your packets. Those applications are from Lexi Cooper, Shelby Freeman, and Emma Sauf. All applicants meet the minimum requirements for this board. There are currently nine open positions on the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, and six students have already been appointed to that.
Thanks.
My only comment is, one of them, it says they must live in the city of Curville. One of them has an Ingram address.
I noticed that, but I noticed that you...
It has been changed to...
Yes, it's been changed. The application was incorrect.
Okay.
Yeah.
The application was wrong.
Well, the requirement on the application was wrong, because it is being made open. And by the way, it's open to anyone in the county, whether they're homeschool, private school, you know, all of those. And let me tell you, reading about these young people, they have excellent recommendations. I think some of them are going to qualify for council here pretty quickly. And so, I had no problems with any of them. We had a meeting as to how we're going to proceed, and we're going to work on a way to call the school and encourage others to participate, and hopefully, be up and running before the school year starts. before the school year starts. With what, we're not sure, but we're going to be up and running. And I think it'll be a good experience for all of us.
Move approved.
Okay, we have a motion that we approve. Lexi Cooper, Shelby Freeman, and Emma Salt. It's been, everything's been done. Motion in second. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes four to zero. So they can be informed, and we'll have three new members. Okay. Item nine is items for future agendas. Anybody have anything? One of the things we might remind is budget, we're scheduled for Friday at 2:00. I did mention to the city manager that we have a very dear friend who's clinging to life right now in the ministry on the East Coast, and we're sort of on hold for that. But I know that Todd said that we are a little bit early in our preliminary discussions, and Councilman Fine's not going to be here either. But right now, we're scheduled to do it, so I'm just telling you that we might, there may be a glitch there. So look at your calendars and we may have to have another special-
Reschedule, yeah.
Reschedule, but hopefully not. So other than that, is there anything else?
I'd like for council to establish, when we send in information requests, and I do it too, that we have a priority system. Because if it's something I need right now, I got somebody in front of me, I call Todd, you know, I kind of want him to give me an answer now. And there's other times where I really don't need it right now, but I'd like to have it in the next couple of days. Could we have some sort of priority system so that Todd knows how quick he needs to jump, or Sandra, or whoever? Probably all should go through Todd, so Todd can, Todd may have Sandra on something else, you know, but let it go through Todd, but have, I don't know if you want to put a one, two, or three on it, or, you know, just something so you know how quick we need it. Because usually when, like if I call and say, hey, can you send me this, I'll put a disclaimer on there, not an emergency, or you need to call me back quickly. So usually I try to do that, but I think it'd be good if the council could establish some sort of a priority system when we send in information requests, that they'll know how quick they need to be jumped through to get that back to us.
I would-
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, I would, I think what you said, I would second that we will always go everything through Todd, you know, or Todd or Mike.
Yeah. Which may all go through Mike.
But I, huh? But I would, you know, could we ask Todd to come up with something?
That's what I was going to suggest. What would make it easier for you? What would be expeditious, you can-
Well, I mean, if there's information that you would like, if you could kind of give me an idea about what is it you're looking for, the need that you have for that information, not that I'm trying to pick it apart or anything, but so that I can understand and I can direct staff on what to develop to make sure that you have useful information. And then to get a schedule, a timeline, if it's a low, medium, or high priority, and then kind of a timeline that you would need it by. And if that could come to me, that'd be great, and I can make sure we get staff addressed. We meet weekly, we cover those types of issues very frequently and regularly, so we could, I think, be efficient for you on that.
Rather than, rather than having to put it on a meeting, maybe you could just devise something and send it to us as to your preference.
But I'm guilty of calling Sandra too and asking her for something, and, you know, when I probably should, Todd should really know what I'm asking, you know, because he's her boss, not me, so.
And staff does a job of keeping me informed on requests that come forward.
That's right.
Yeah, if we could follow it through, then I could maybe help organize-
Okay, just send us what you'd like for your protocol, and we'll abide by it. Okay, announcements, oh, anything else? Was there anything else? Announcements, item number 10, announcements of community interest. Curville Beautification Day scheduled for Saturday, this Saturday, June the 18th, and the theme for this quarter is storm cleanup. I'm liaison to the beautification committee, and so they wanted to combine all of the tragedy that we had and all the mess that was made by the storm with their efforts at beautifying the city. And remind you that next week, they'll be doing the pickups, so get your debris out there. Ask residents to participate by tidying up your properties. Any storm-related yard waste can be put out for collection the week of June 20th for Yard Waste Collection Week. The collection is part of each resident's regular waste disposal services and occurs once a month. For more information on your designated yard waste removal day and the guidelines for disposing of it, visit the city's website at curviltex.gov. And there's just one reminder there, just driving up and down city streets, we have to be reminded that the waste receptacles recycle and debris not be placed under trees or overhanging, something that would keep those trucks from being able to lift that and dispose of it. This Friday night will be the first installment of movies in the park at Louise Hayes Park. All are invited to come out to the park at 9:00 PM to watch Monsters University. Entrance to the movie and park is free, and Buzzy's Barbecue will be onsite selling food and drink. The Curville Skate Competition is also this Saturday, June 18th, at 11:00 AM. Competition is held at Singing Winds Park and is free and open to the public. You can come to skate, or you can come to watch, individuals ages eight and above. Now, it said eight to 17 on the website. Which is it, Caitlin?
I saw a poster that it's 18 and above, there's a section, there's the age section.
Well, at your own risk then, I guess I would say. Using your best judgment, you can participate. Entrants will have three minutes to perform their best skating skills. The Summer Reading Club at the Buttholesworth Memorial Library is off and running. Fun and free events are scheduled every week through the end of July for both children and adults. Everyone is invited to participate. You do not need to have a library card to participate in events. For a full list of those events, and there are a number of them, folks, visit the library calendar on the city of Curville's website. Aren't there family movie afternoons also, Caitlin, at the library, for when it's hot in mid-afternoon?
And Laura's back here too. You can ask her.
That's right, that's right. We have our reps from the library here, so. Would you all like to say anything? Would you like to mention anything else?
Yeah, Laura, you're so excited about all this. Get up there and plug it. And I don't know if you've met all of our librarians, but we have a children's librarian and Laura and everybody else out there, and they're always very excited about the programs.
We're just very excited to have everybody out for our summer reading program, and we also especially want to invite everybody out to the Callow Theater on Wednesdays, where we have professional performers coming to do free and exciting shows for area youth, and those shows are at 10:00 and 11:00 AM. And tomorrow will be Storybook Theater will be performing the new story of Little Red Riding Hood.
Oh, nice.
We're very excited to have everybody out to the library.
Very good, thank you. Thank both of you for coming tonight. There are a lot of events there. Is there anything else I missed?
Playhouse 2000 has a full schedule this summer coming up. If you missed Shakespeare in the Park, actually it was Shakespeare in the theater because it was raining, but it was really phenomenal production. I mean, for moving it indoors, it was a lot of fun. It helps if you speak Shakespeare to understand it, other than that, you just laugh and everybody else laughs, and, you know, kind of go, when they do. But other than that, it's a lot of fun, but there's some really good plays coming up, and keep an eye out for those in the main theater and in the BK Garage Theater. A lot of good fun stuff happening.
Very good. So, item number 11 is, do we need, is there a need for an executive session on 11A or 11B?
Yes, on both of sections, .071, .072.
I'd like a point of clarification, if I could, from Councilman Fine. Just, there were three conflicts of interest filed last May concerning the River Trail. Actually, Gene's, I mean Gary's, yours is June, I think Gene Allen's is May, I think he meant June. But just a point of clarification from Councilman Fine, because this-
That is still on file.
So you are-
That is still on file.
There's still a contract going back and forth, okay. Because it does allow a different arrangement of the seating of councils, so I don't know if that's something we could discuss later, but I don't know for nine or 10 months. Brenda, have we received any updates on any conflicts? Okay. There, I don't know if the ones you have on file are notarized, the copies I have, three of them are not?
They are.
Okay, they are notarized. All right. Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
What was your question about the conflicts of interest?
In a state of confidentiality, I will just discuss with the attorney.
Okay. Because I can discuss mine open and in public, I don't mind.
Okay, that's fine. Your still stands.
Yeah, I have a, I own a rent property on Guadalupe Street.
Yeah.
So, and on the other side of the street, we're talking about the River Trail.
Right.
So I don't own property on that side of the street, but I still feel like I have a conflict. So just to be clear and transparent.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And so the public will know, it's a local government code directive that, a law that if there's a conflict of interest with a potential economic benefit for any decision that's made, the council members are required to file a conflict of interest report and recuse from the meeting. In this particular case that we have, we have three that have filed a conflict of interest. So by law, we don't have a quorum, and we have to have the entire council seated, and so the entire council is in on it. And my question was, I just didn't know how long we could have a conflict on an item that's pending, Mr. Hayes, that's not-
You know what, I don't know the specifics to that, but I think you heard that the conflicts are still in effect. What we could probably do is modify the forms a bit to put a timeline on those so that those have to be refiled at some point, and then Brenda can be in charge of that and notify the person with the conflict, hey, you need to refile or withdraw it or something, or retire.
Because there's standard language by law, as we all know, that you have it or you don't have it. And so if you say, we have it, and we own this, or we are involved, but we're not, then it's not, in my mind, a real conflict of interest, because that is not an established-
Yeah, no, I think, right, right. And Mr. Hayes has been good about being cautious on the side of careful.
Erring on the side of caution, I understand, but, you know, there, it's, he's protect, people, we're all protected.
It's not on the agenda, Bonn. I mean, I'm going to have to-
It affects the vote that we, to go into executive session if we-
Okay, well, I've already clarified my answer for you, so I don't know what else we're, you're beating a dead horse right now. I mean, I don't know what else you want.
We'll get, we'll have clarification on it then.
Well, I've already given you mine, so.
Okay.
In that case, I would move that we move into executive session under sections 551.071 and 551.072 to deal with a lawsuit and real estate.
I would second that motion.
There's been a motion and there's been a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four to zero. Thank everyone for coming. You're welcome to stay till we resume. We are now going into executive session.